Good evening, everyone. It's Fred.
Hey Fred.
Record now. There you go.
Did you publish us to anybody that may be out there? I don't know if there's any participant.
Susan O'Brien is the only attendee, and then we have 15 panelists. Want me to promote you to co-host?
Oh, no.
We ready for the announcement, Chair?
We're ready, Doug.
This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Notice, inclusive of electronic notice of this meeting, has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board's reorganization, January, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year and, as revised subsequently in the year, as a result of the pandemic. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice was also published on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall and has continuously remained posted there as required by statute. Notice was also posted on the Borough website, providing instructions for public participation and access to the meeting remotely. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is filed in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call, please, Allison or Judy. Who's doing roll call? Judy?
Yes. Mr. Bordalong?
Here.
Ms. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Clutch?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Paolo?
Here.
Mr. Rolfe?
Here.
Mr. Nitka?
Here.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Leader?
Here.
Doug, we've got a few new members. You want to do the oaths?
Yes. I hope all members have had an opportunity to have the oath in front of them. It makes it easier to read. Just a few preliminary instructions. I will start you off with, I state your name where appropriate, and then you'll come to a portion of your specific duties. Either in board member class four, planning board member as the mayor's representative, planning board member as the alternative two. We're going to swear you in en masse. I ask you to repeat after me. Once we've completed the oath, I'm going to ask you to sign the oath immediately above where your name is printed, get those to the Borough Hall, and then subsequent date, I'll conform those. So, if you will.
I'm not sure if they got that.
Yeah, I didn't get it, though.
I didn't get it either.
I don't know that Jen had sent it when I had given it to her.
Well, you know, I do have paper copies I can send out, but since they have to come into the office to sign them anyway, you might as well just sign the copy that's sitting on your desk.
Okay. And we're gonna, we're gonna break it up a little bit slower. Please state your name. Kelly Bush?
Kelly Bush.
Mr. Nitka?
Mike Nitka.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Robert Burkhardt.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Jersey.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state?
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state?
Governments established in the United States and this state?
And to the government established in the United States and this state?
Under the authority of the people?
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 And I will justly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of?
And I will justfully, faithfully, and impartially repeat that?
Duties of?
Perform the duties of?
No, justfully, justly, faithfully, and
impartially?
And partially perform the duties of?
And I will justfully, faithfully, and partially perform the duties of what?
That's impartial. I'm going to give you your title now. Mr. Kelly Bush, Planning Board Mayor's Representative.
Planning Board Mayor's Representative.
Mr. Nitka, Planning Board Class Four Member?
Planning Board Class Four Member.
Mr. Burkhardt, Planning Board Alternative Number Two Member?
Planning Board Alternate Number Two Member.
According to the best of my ability?
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 So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, everyone. When you have an opportunity, please respond to the Planning Board Office, sign those, and then I will do the same. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Me too.
That was awesome. That was really awesome. You know, with Zoom, we just figure it out as we go, right? And, you know, we haven't actually talked about it, but for those that didn't know, Jen has left us. So Judy Fuller was the Secretary of the Zoning and Planning Board for at least a year before that started, and is jumping in to help us during the transition period. Allison is working with us to manage Zoom tonight. Future meetings, we may have Joe Mulley jump in. But we appreciate your support and keeping us running. We are, once again, with an agenda that is very limited. We don't have any applications on the agenda tonight. So we have our standard reorganization stuff, which are the things that are listed in Item Two on the agenda, and then we also have a handful of resolutions with regard to some of the outgoing members. So in the sequence, the first thing we need to do is to nominate and elect a chair. So that would start with somebody that wants to make a nomination, or talk about who they think could be Chair in 2021.
I nominate Todd Leader to be Chair.
I second.
Any discussion, objections, comments?
Please.
Sounds good.
Do we need a third?
Need a roll call.
Third.
Well, Doug, before we do that, do you want to talk about the class of membership? Is that something that we need to clarify before we proceed?
Yeah, we should, we should clarify that. In looking at the board's website, I saw that there was designation of Todd as our Class Two member. Technically, our Chair and our Vice Chair should be selected from our Class Four members. It seems to me that there may be an anomaly in this instance because Todd may have been appointed temporarily to fulfill a Class Two membership position, which is now exhausted as a result of Mr. Rice no longer being on our board. I think Todd may have been designated as Class Two at that point in time. Hyper technically, we should amend that in some, in some fashion, and my understanding is that, and I'd like to just confirm this on the record, so to speak, Mr. D'Angelo, I'm going to ask you just to unmute temporarily. Are you a member of the Board of Education?
I am.
Okay, so you're our alternate member, Member of the Board of Education. I understand that we do have an Environmental Commission, and that an Environmental Commission member is by statute to be appointed to our Planning Board member, but that Planning Board member has yet to be appointed. Is that correct? I ask for our Borough Clerk to confirm that.
An Environmental Commission member?
We do, we do not, we have, we have an Environmental Commission, but we don't have an Environment Commission on the Planning Board. Is that?
Um, let me just check. Just bear with me.
Okay, then my counsel to you at this point in time is, when a board of edu, excuse me, when a planning board has, and has an Environmental Commission member even though yet to be appointed, and within their group, there is also a Board of Education member, even in the alternate position, then under the statute for appointments, the Class Two position goes to the Environmental Commission. That would essentially say that Todd, in this instance, is a Class Four member. He is therefore eligible, in my view, to become Chair. However, I think we need to make sure we straighten that out down the line, because I get well, two things. I'm making the assumption that we're going to comply with the obligation to appoint the Environmental Commission member, and I want to make sure that that seat is still open, so that we do not have a Class Two member as of this reorganization. Mr., our Chair is a Class Four member, and I think we should be able to proceed based upon covering that the best I can in the record.
There's no Environmental Commission member on the, currently on the board, so.
Correct. But we do have a Mission, and by, and I'm by statute, if you do have an Environmental Commission, a member of the Environmental Commission must be designated by Mayor Council to be on the Planning Board. So that's, that's make your Class Two member. So, de facto, Mr. Leader is, is not going to be our Class Two member. He would fall into a Class Four member because of that unusual situation.
We do have an opening on the board, Allison, so maybe the mayor can find someone from the Environmental Commission?
I will speak with him.
Okay. And I think that that covers that. I guess now we, I would, I would ask for the roll on.
Roll call? Okay. Mr. Bordalong?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Clutch? Betsy?
She said yes. She's muted.
Okay. Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
I'll stand. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. And obviously, we'll, we'll have a discussion with the mayor and do whatever cleanup needs to be done, and if there's a problem, we'll talk about it next month. The next nomination is Vice Chair. Andrew Sobel, who is the outgoing Vice Chair, is in the process of preparing a letter. It's, it's in editing now about resigning from the board. Andrew's firm was recently hired to represent the Borough for 2021. And out of an abundance of caution related to conflicts of interest and other things, Andrew's going to be tendering his resignation. So interestingly, I really, I had not given this any thought prior to tonight. I apologize, probably remiss in not thinking through and perhaps grabbing a few of the members that have been on this board more than 15 minutes, and see if anybody is ready to step into the Vice Chair position. So frankly, I haven't really given it any thought, but my only thought would be that for the newest of our members, perhaps a bit early, the Vice Chair would have to step into my seat to the extent that I'm not here, and also participates in the administration of the agenda, specifically traditionally, handling resolutions and things like that, and involved in some communications outside of the board meeting, meetings when we're dealing with things related to the agenda and other things in the Borough. Any questions about what goes into being the Vice Chair? Is there anybody interested in serving in the Vice Chair seat? So, not seeing a hand. First of all, let me tell you that I think that you're all excellent members and that anybody could serve the role with their own Dave, you know, we've had some discussions in the past about a couple, you need to mute there, maybe. Are you interested in serving?
I'm just worried about the time commitment. That's the only thing.
Okay.
If that's an answer, yes or no, so. I guess if you, if you really need someone, I guess I could step in and see if we can make it work.
Well, you know, the other alternative is, we can sit on this for a month, and we can have some discussions on the side, and, you know, we can talk about it in February. We have no agenda at the moment. It is, it's obviously potential. Look, I get hit by a bus tomorrow. You know, my wife is hiring buses to go by the house all the time, and I never know when one's going to get me.
And stay away from the post office, apparently.
That's definitely true. That's definitely true. So, look, I don't know, but, I mean, unless anybody feels strongly in one direction or another, I'm more than happy to let this roll until February. We can talk about it more offline.
That sounds good, I think.
Then may I suggest a motion to table the vice chairmanship as an order?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Who's second?
Everybody.
Me or Dave or whoever?
Dave, okay. Mr. Bordalong?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Clutch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. Okay, the next appointment of the Board Attorney. For those that follow these things, there's two ways to do this. Either we do this through Fair and Open, or we do this through Non-Fair and Open, which is really an ugly name, but that's the way it works. The boards have, in all years that I can remember, followed the lead of the Borough. Borough did not reach out to the boards and ask for us to solicit or direct. We have not solicited. Mr. Kovats has served us for a number of years and has done an excellent job. I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Kovats and the firm of Kenny. Why isn't Kovats first?
Because we, we liked Mr. Kenny. Mr. Gross was there before me, and then Kovats came. So it's Kenny Gross, Kovats, and Barton.
Thank you very much. That would be my motion.
I second it.
Who was the second? Was that James?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Bordalong?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Clutch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. Next is the appointment of the Board Engineer. As many know, the Board Engineer is supplied to us by the Borough, and we're fortunate to have Rich Bardella as the Borough Engineer, and I would make a motion to Bardella as the Planning Board Engineer for 2021.
I second.
Mr. Bordalong?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Clutch?
Yes.
Newell?
Yes.
Rolo?
Yes.
Rolfe?
Yes.
Nitka?
Yes.
Burkhardt? Oh, I'm sorry. No. D'Angelo?
Yes.
And Leader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Richard, is Rich there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Because I have a question for you later. Or I can ask you now.
Now that you're on the payroll.
Are there, are there any applications look like they're going to be coming up for February?
We, we're hearing of one maybe coming in, a small site plan.
Okay.
Nothing's been submitted yet, though.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the appointment of the Board Planner. As many of you know, the Borough Planner, Higher and Gool, has historically been accepted as the Borough Planner for the Planning Board, and Elena Gable has been the primary role of actually being at her meetings. And I would like to appoint, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Higher and Gool for 2021 as the Board Planner.
I second.
Mr. Bordalong?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Clutch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Looking forward to working with you for the year. Thanks.
Excellent. Next is the appointment of the Board Secretary. Now, we have to be careful, because Judy has agreed to step in, but not for very long. So I think what the zoning board did was to appoint Judy as the temporary or acting secretary with recognition of the fact that we don't want to ask for too much, or we'll lose her. So I'd like to make the motion to appoint Judy as the acting Secretary of Planning Board.
Second.
Bordalong?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Clutch?
Yes.
Newell?
Yes.
Paolo?
Yes.
Rolfe?
Yes.
Nitka?
Yes.
D'Angelo?
Yes.
Leader?
Yes. Next item is the meeting dates for 2021. So in 2020, we had a list of dates that we put together that we gave to council. It's been published as the anticipated dates of Planning Board for 2021, but only this board newly constituted this evening can actually adopt those dates. Has everybody not actually on the, the agenda? Do we, we have those dates to just share with everybody? Has everybody seen them?
The third Tuesday of each month, so tonight, February 16th, March 16th, April 20th, May 18th, June 15th, July 20th, August 17th, September 21st, October 19th, November 16th, and December 21st.
So from time to time.
Did you say June 15th, Allison?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I think also, for purposes of continuity, we designate January 18th to so that we can hold that meeting, at least publish the notice. That was read into the record at this point.
So there is a thought here in terms of trying to identify dates where we won't have predictable conflicts. In the past, we tried to avoid things such as department's fair, teachers' convention, school holidays. Does anybody know of any of those dates that create a community-wide problem?
No.
I don't think so. I reviewed it with Jen.
No, I checked the school calendar, but that only goes up until July, but looks okay. They can always be changed with, with notice.
Yep, yep. Make a motion to adopt those dates as the meeting dates for the Planning Board for 2021.
Second.
Bordalong?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Clutch?
Yes.
Newell?
Yes.
Rolo?
Yes.
Rolfe?
Yes.
Nitka?
Yes.
D'Angelo?
Yes.
Leader?
Yes. Approval of the official newspapers. This is the last of the dry, boring agenda. So we have to adopt our newspapers for publication. Allison, what are the three newspapers that are used by the Borough?
The Asbury Park Press, the Star Ledger, and the Two River Times.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt those three papers as our official papers for 2021.
Second.
Bordalong?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Clutch?
Yes.
Newell?
Yes.
Paolo?
Yes.
Rolfe?
Yes.
Nitka?
Yes.
D'Angelo?
Yes.
Leader?
Yes. All right, we're through that. We have two resolutions that have been prepared to recognize departing members. We have three?
Well, the third is for Jen.
Oh, for Jen. That's not on my agenda. Very good, though. So this has become a bit of a tradition on the boards, and we do this to sort of recognize the service of the outgoing members. I just wanted to speak briefly about each of them. Michael Borneo was not on for a long time, but did do a lot with regard to the affordable housing, and is actually still serving in that capacity. He's moved, and as a result, he can no longer be on this board, but he was an active participant when he was here. Jen was serving as Rich's secretary and shadowing Judy for many years, and took on an important role as Secretary of the Board, and did a really, really excellent job, and we're all very sorry to see her go, but we all wish her well. This is obviously the way things go, so I think it's worthy of recognition. Last, and really most significantly, Jim Engel is a pillar of our community. I actually don't know how long Jim has served the community or on this board. 1985 on the Planning Board?
He was appointed by Mayor Nancy Kern in 1985.
It's, it's, it's just unbelievable. Jim is sort of the essence of what a community like Fairhaven is truly about, and it is super important, as those of you who are all younger than him, as I look at this screen, pass those messages on to your neighbors and your friends as to why active participation in this community is important. So recognition of Jim and all that he has given to this community and this board is certainly warranted. I would like to can I move all three together?
Would you like me to read all three together?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I certainly move all three, and I'll read all three into the record.
Oh, all right, so I'm going to move it. So I'm going to make come on, Doug. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolutions recognizing Jim Engel, Michael Borneo, and Jennifer Johnson as the former Secretary of the Board. I need a second first.
Second.
Well, we'll make the motion. I'll read the resolution. All right, you're right. Second now.
Talking by Newell.
This is Mr. Engel's resolution. Whereas James Engel, having served diligently for many years as a member of the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven, and whereas James Engel, during his years of service, brought insight to land use applications coming before the Planning Board, often providing historical perspective and thoughtful analysis which assisted the board in its decision-making process, resulting in the protection of the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the Borough of Fairhaven, and whereas the board, desiring to publicly recognize and expect to express its appreciation to James Engel for his dedicated and professional service and valuable input and participation as a member of the board, now therefore be it resolved by the board, hereby finds that special reasons exist for the adoption of this resolution, recognizing James Engel for his valuable service as a member of the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven, be it further resolved by the board that it hereby makes and adopts this resolution, recognizing James Engel for his dedicated service as a member of the Board, and further extends to James Engel the board's best wishes for success in all of his future endeavors. This resolution is for Michael Borneo. Whereas Michael Borneo, having served diligently for many years as a member of the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven, whereas Michael Borneo, during his years of service, displayed thoughtful analysis to land use applications coming before the board, often presenting common sense solutions to matters under consideration, which assisted the board in its decision-making process, was in the protection of the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the Borough of Fairhaven, and whereas the board, desiring to publicly recognize and express its appreciation to Michael Borneo for his dedicated and professional service and valuable input and participation as a member of the board, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby finds and includes that special reasons exist for the adoption of this resolution, recognizing Michael Borneo for his valuable service as a member of the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven. recognizing Michael Borneo for his valuable service as a member of the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven. Be it further resolved by the board that it hereby makes and adopts this resolution, recognizing Michael Borneo for his dedicated service as a member of the Planning Board and it further extends to Michael Borneo the board's best wishes for his success in all his future endeavors. Jennifer Johnson. Whereas Jennifer Johnson, having served diligently as the Board Secretary for the Planning Board of the Borough of Fairhaven, and whereas Jennifer Johnson during her service to the Planning Board assisted in organizing the board's meeting agenda, acted as recording secretary during the board meetings, produced meeting minutes, oversaw day-to-day operations of the board, and generally kept the board on task and its members well-informed in a professional and extraordinarily cordial manner. And whereas the board desiring to publicly recognize and express its appreciation to Jennifer Johnson for her dedicated and professional service and valuable input and participating as Planning Board Secretary, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby finds and concludes that special reasons exist for the adoption of this resolution, recognizing Jennifer Johnson for her valuable service as the Planning Board Secretary. Be it further resolved by the board that it hereby makes and adopts this resolution, recognizing Jennifer Johnson for her dedicated service as Planning Board Secretary, and it further extends to Jennifer Johnson the board's best wishes for success in all her future endeavors.
I'll call this Judy.
Mr. Board Along?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. Doug, thank you. Very nice job with those. Appreciate it. Last item on the administrative list is approval of the minutes from the November 17th, 2020 meeting. Anybody like to make a motion to move those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
That was, who's second?
Jerry.
Eric.
Okay. Mr. Board Along?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Koch?
They have to abstain.
Yeah, so Ms. Bush was not on the board then, so she's not in a position to vote on the November ones.
Nothing against her, it's just, you have to have the members that were here approve the minutes.
For what it's worth, it was the right vote.
Thanks, Todd.
Ms. Koch?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Newell?
I wasn't here for that meeting as well.
You weren't, okay. And Mr. Paolo was not there for the meeting?
I was there. I, I vote yes.
Oh, okay. Then she's got the wrong thing marked off. Mr. Newell?
I wasn't here.
Or Mr. Rolfe?
Wait, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Pow, Mr. Powell, were you at, were you at the November meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and Jim Engel was out, was not?
I was not.
Wow, okay. But just one column off. Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nitka?
He must abstain at this point.
Abstain.
Okay. And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. I believe that concludes the eligible members.
So as part of our regular meeting, we go to the public. I know that there's one member there, so I will invite the, the single member of the public for any comments. Does any board member have any questions or comments with regard to where we are, where we're going, what's going on? Before we do that. So it's been extremely slow on the Planning Board. Zoning Board is working double time. We probably have seven or eight different applications that are pending. We're doing three a night at least trying, super, super busy. Planning Board matters are a little different, but they come in in waves just the same way. So enjoy the time while you've got it. And those that were on last year can remember that at the end of the summer, we had to have a special and we were very, very busy with the affordable housing stuff. Those things are not resolved. They're still open, lots of open dens in town, so there'll be plenty to do whenever the world tells us they're ready for us to do it. Anybody from the public, have any comments, questions to the board?
There's no branch, the only attendee, and she's, her hand is not raised, so.
I'm her season. Okay. Nothing further? No, she didn't do it? Didn't raise it? All right. Well, yeah, Doug.
Just, just a comment. I, I do know, and I wanted to make mention, I believe we did receive the Zoning Board of Adjustments Annual Report to the Planning Board. You might want to take some time at a future date, not for this evening because it's not on the agenda, to at least review that. And, and I think one of their suggestions, and I will, if, if you guys are ready for Saturday, I, I know that occasionally board members get thrown into this. You will all, particularly the newer members, will all get, receive some training. However, sometimes that training is not scheduled for several months out. If it will help you, I will offer a Saturday, which seems to be the best way, you know, come in, social distance, and we would have to advertise, I'm sure, if we have a quorum, but to, to outline some of the things that you consider as a Planning Board member, what types of C variances we consider, what types of issues are presented before Fairhaven on, on sort of a routinized basis, what your role is as a Planning Board member, why E variances are not heard by you, why only C variances are heard, and what your role is with regard to the master plan. And I guess other, otherwise, usually what happens with regard to our role in doing legislation that affects land use development. If you're interested in that, I would ask you to let the secretary know. Then we can try to coordinate some time that's available to everybody. As I say, I, I find that usually in a relaxed atmosphere, I've done these for other boards that I represent, usually a relaxed atmosphere, where you get to ask those questions, where you, you might not normally want to do that in a full-blown public meeting where we have lots of time pressure to get things done and review. Sometimes, you know, five or 10 minutes of explanation as to why this is considered under a C variance and why something else isn't, saves a lot of time and confusion. So I offer that.
Would you, would, do you want me to also check with the Planning Association to see when their next class is? Whether the, whether they're having in Monmouth County, or should we?
I, just let Doug do it. We're going to be required to do that.
Right.
The difficult, the thing that, that happens in those, and I'm, they're extraordinarily thorough, but by their very nature, they're extraordinarily general. And the focus that I would have for the, for the board here are some of the, more of the nuts and bolts things that we're seeing on a routine basis here in Fairhaven that are more tailored or custom-made for Fairhaven.
Good, okay, so we can just see if every, you know, if we can coordinate a time, then I won't bother with the county.
Well, you can, you can, I mean, I, I would leave that to the members. The members may want to have, I never stop anybody from getting education.
Doug, I'm going to make a suggestion. I've got my Cox book here. What I've typically done when we actually saw each other is I would actually go around to my partners that have the land use books, and I would grab some older versions of Cox. Cox is kind of a treatise on municipal land use law in New Jersey. And it has some really excellent sections which kind of start with the fundamental role and authority of planning of the zoning boards under state law. So the way it works is that the, the, the state law creates through the municipal land use law these boards or the right to, to, to form these boards. And then the board's jurisdiction is defined as a subset of that MLUL in different sections. Doug, I think it would be great if you could take the relevant section, starting with kind of the formation. I don't want to do 100 pages, but there's about 25 to 50 useful pages of sort of the composition of the board and, you know, kind of where the board's role sits in the organization of the Borough Land Use Matters. You and I can discuss about planning if you want, but I, I'd be a really good idea for everybody to take a half an hour, 45 minutes, and read that section. You know, we're not busy right now. We will get busy. For those that haven't been on but are familiar with Duncan and are familiar with, you know, Kick Dance Studio, which is just at, at the zoning board. You know, the commercial things, the Acme, the things that are going to come before us. By the time they come, they're just here. So taking a little bit of time to understand what we do, how we do it, ask the questions before you're actually, you know, in the fire is a good idea. It's not hard for those of you that I've dragged onto this board. It's not that much homework. It's just a little bit. But it'll make you more comfortable, you know, when you get into that position of needing to actually honor that oath that you just took. So I will work with Doug and get those written materials circulated so that you all have an opportunity. And then maybe when we come back in February, we can talk a little bit further. The other thing that Doug was talking about, Judy was, was referencing was there is state mandated training. It's not long. It's a few hours. It's on a Saturday. They do it once or twice a year. All new members are supposed to sign up for it. I don't know what they're doing now with COVID, but for anybody that hasn't done it, you'll have to do it. Once you've done it once, you never have to do it again. And it's, it's informative. It gives you bearings in terms of what you're doing on the board. You all know that it's important. You all care about the community, so you've got the essential elements of it right there. Anything else before we close?
Do you need me to send the zoning report to the new members, just so they can?
So, yeah, Allison, I want you to circulate it to everybody. So the, the zoning board annually prepares a report. The, the, the report is circulated to the Planning Board and to council. The report summarizes what the zoning board does. Part of understanding the way that the different entities work is sort of builds into this model. But the zoning board does the report. It goes to the Planning Board and the council. Planning Board, the council is supposed to review it and consider the status of things with regard to the ordinances and recommendations by the zoning board. It's worth taking a look at. It will help you understand where there are deviations being granted to the ordinances they sit. And you'll also see some recommendations for future actions. The one thing that's particularly notable this year is there were members of the zoning board that thought it important that we consider putting together a smaller group, some sort of a committee with members of the council and the zoning board and presumably the planning board to actually advance some of the discussions about what we may be able to tweak and improve with regard to not only the ordinances, but the processes. I know that Betsy's in the middle of some of those discussions or soon will be. And I would just encourage everybody to think about those issues as they read the report, whether or not they have any input or might want to get involved. Betsy, anything on that?
No, I, I read their report that, that they drew up, and it's extremely comprehensive. And I think it would be worthwhile for everyone to read it. It really is a very good summary of what the zoning board has accomplished. And it also includes their suggestions for ways to make it better. And I think it would be an important document for everybody to read.
Good stuff. Allison, if you could circulate, that would be great. I will talk to Doug and get some of the Cox section circulated, so everybody has an opportunity to read that. I'm always available offline if anybody has any questions or if I could be of any assistance.
Could I just say one more thing? I think Doug offering to hold a workshop, I'm not, I guess that's what you would call it, for members of the Planning Board, would really be an excellent way for our members to informally get together and, you know, discuss some issues while we're not in the spotlight. I think it would be a good thing.
Doug, were you going to limit that to not, a non-quorum?
I, you know, I've, I've done it both ways. In, in different municipalities, depending on how many people want to do it. If you want to do this as a non, as a non-quorum, we can. Otherwise, you can basically advertise it where there's not going to be any public action taken. You will still technically have to allow members of the public to be there. But what you're really going to be having is, at least my experience has been, for those hearty souls that want to come out, who are not members of the Planning Board and actually witness a workshop session, they're usually folks that are genuinely interested in how the boards work. What I've done in the past, as I said, we've, we've sort of sat in one section. We'll have to do some social distancing. If we do it that way, or if it's a Zoom meeting, we can do that, too. But basically, and I, I'll share this with you, Todd. I'll show you some of the materials I've passed out for other boards, different stream, different variances and the different rules of the board. If you want to do it as a non-quorum, it might be easier, particularly in these days of COVID, do that, allow for social distancing. We can do that. We can split that up. Because, because it, it, and you may want to say, well, you know, why would COVats want to give up a Saturday? I'll tell you, it, I think it pays extraordinary dividends when I have board members that understand, you know, what the fundamentals are. It allows you to streamline the process. It allows you to understand what questions are relevant for your determination, what you have jurisdiction over. And even though it, you might really have an extraordinary question about something, if it's not within your realm to change it or have jurisdiction, you can streamline your process when you go before the hearing. You can see that that's, and I've just to all of our members, you'll see that as you go along, what we try to do, I think what we try to do is let the Planning Board do its real planning function during the course of the meeting. After we've gotten our reports from our Borough Engineer, very detailed, very precise, from our Borough Planner as to what your issues are, so that you're going to have a packet of information that sort of outline what the issues are. And then when you get to your meeting, because you do have such time constraints, you really get to the nuts and bolts, particularly with the input from the public as to what's important from them to be able to deal with that and be real planners. Sort of the Legislative Committee for the, for the, what I refer to as the guardians of the, of the master plan and the Legislative Committee for Mayor and Council as to what happens in planning in this municipality. I just think it helps streamline so that you're not all over the board when you finally come to a meeting.
Well, the reason that Doug would give up a Saturday is because Doug doesn't just work for us. Doug works with us and he's thoughtful, and he goes that extra mile. So thank you, Doug. I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion because we don't currently know that we have an agenda in February. And we've blown through several meetings without an agenda already. It may well be that we have no agenda in February, and we could do this as a regular meeting. The other thing I would consider doing is inviting the zoning board members and members of council. You know, we could blend all this into some of the thoughts. Start with a, you know, broader discussion. Doug, you can lead that discussion. It could be a regular public discussion. Just so everybody understands what I, what I imagine is going to happen. And I assume it's going to start in 2021, but, you know, I guess we'll see. And many of your terms run beyond then. You know, we're going to have some substantial applications that are going to come in for our downtown area. There's been a lot of attention brought to our downtown area through the affordable housing discussion and specifically the ongoing discussions with regard to the redevelopment of the Sunoco site. When that happens, the board will be presented with something that is going to have a significant impact on the development of downtown for decades. I mean, decades isn't really enough. You know, once these buildings are built, they're there. As you look downtown now, you've got buildings that were built in the 50s. The decision about where to put them, how tall they are, how far they are from their side yards. These are all the decisions that will eventually be part of an application before this board. And those decisions come with a lot of weight. And being ready and understanding what we're supposed to do and getting familiar with what your role in the process is, I think is really important. I don't know when it'll happen, but I, I know that everybody will be thankful for having as much understanding of what they're supposed to do. The Duncan application was, was heavy and weighed on everyone heavily on both boards. It weighed on the community heavily. And that process is something that I'm proud of. And I know that not everybody loves the result, but I'm proud of the way we conducted those hearings. And you'll all be a part of whatever comes next. Anything further before we make a motion to close? I'll make the motion to close.
Thank you, Doug.
If no one seconds, you have to stay here all night.
I got it.
Who got it?
Jim.
Jim Newell.
You'll get to go home. Are you already home? I can't wait to go home. All in favor?
Yes.
Thanks for everybody's time. Welcome to the appointment, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Allison.
You're welcome.